Welcome back, everyone. We are working through our agenda. We are back on exec session. We are back, he says again, for our regular public session of the Ithaca City School District. And I think, just looking at the agenda, I don't believe we have a modification to our agenda. It is likely that we will go back into exec session after our regular board meeting agenda is complete. We'll know more once we get there, but expect, at the end of the meeting, we may indeed go back into exec session again to take care of a little bit more business before we're done tonight. So that's the only modification or suggested modification that I have. I think we're good otherwise. So I think we can just move on to public comment period. And Tricia and Sean, I'm not sure whether anyone has signed up, but I didn't see the emails to that effect. But we'll open it up for public comment at this time.
And a reminder to folks, you can either send a chat to Tricia directly, or you can use the raise hand feature to let us know you'd like to speak.
It's like, Sean is like washing your hands. You have to, well, saying happy birthday to you twice, and that's giving up. Everyone's used to that now. So, or I just talk for a minute. But it seems like I'm not hearing or seeing anyone that wishes to speak this evening, correct? If not, we always appreciate our folks tuning in and always appreciate your comments, and feel free to do that at any time. So we'll just hop on over to the student reps. And we still have Ithaca High student reps, I believe, and they should be back, back in school, I believe.
Hi. So as we all know, so this past week was pretty crazy for everyone, especially for many students for whom it may have been the first time experiencing such a traumatic event on a grand scale. And I think it's safe to say that just about everyone's psyche was affected by the events on Wednesday. But on Thursday, at Ithaca High School, teachers were encouraged to discuss the events with their classes. And extra breakout rooms were hosted during lunch for students who wished to discuss the matter further or just have a place to talk. And all of that together, especially just going over the events in class and kind of getting input from different teachers in different subjects and hearing other people talk about it was very comforting for students. And we surveyed students about the school's response, and most everyone felt supported and comforted. And students also wished to see, or the students also wished to see more active class discussion about current events in the future, especially in topics such as politics where it has kind of been discouraged in the past.
As always, we are grateful to be continuing to work with the IHS administration. The other day, we had a chance to talk with Mr. Trumble about recent COVID cases, and we got a more clear explanation about why that this time they were able to keep schools open. We found that this was because that they have more teachers available. So we are glad that the students can stay in school. And as always, we are continuing to emphasize mental health. So as such, we are working with IHS administration to create more mental health support services, especially on the asynchronous Wednesdays. This is still in planning, but we're planning to include, like, make meets with students, and they can just talk about what's happening, what's on their mind. We can also include meets with their teachers that aren't just office hours, so it can lead to increased engagement between the student and the teacher and just getting to know each other. So we feel like this will be beneficial to students' mental health.
As the surveillance testing is starting to be implemented in the high school, it largely seems to be doing well. We definitely appreciate the clarity that the admin has had about the process from the schedule of the student-teacher testing to the process of the tests itself. There are some questions that some students have about it, like the availability of testing from other sites, but we plan to discuss that more with the admin. And we had a question about the vaccinations. So as Phase 1B of the vaccinations has begun, we understand that educational staff are part of that, and we're wondering, like, if the district is doing anything or if they're setting up a site for the vaccines to be distributed to the teachers.
And Emma is not here today, so, yeah.
No, thanks for that, Adam. And, you know, thank you all, board responses. And we can probably answer Alexandra's question, I believe, if one of the exec team at least would step in.
Are we waiting for that, Rob?
While we're waiting for that, Maura, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Once again, you guys are wonderfully thoughtful and communicative with us, with your peers. I'm really, really impressed that you managed to already survey students about the school's response to the events of last Wednesday. That you managed to do that is fantastic. It's so proactive. And then hearing that most of the students surveyed felt that the response was supportive is very reassuring to me, because as a former teacher, I was thinking quite a lot last Wednesday and in the following days about how are people who are in school with students, you know, how are the adults handling this unprecedented, to use the most overused word of 2020, the unprecedented events of last Wednesday. Also, you know, really glad that you guys are being proactive about mental health issues. And I'm thinking that, you know, these asynchronous Wednesdays, you know, or, you know, moving forward when we're not necessarily online, but having a day that where there is, you know, less of the business as usual could really, really be a great opportunity for providing the kind of supports and interactions that students really need. So keep up the great work, you guys.
I want to echo Moira and just say kudos to you guys. And I want to be mentioned that, you know, you've never been through anything like this before. None of us have. I don't think anyone here has lived through a pandemic or an insurgency in our own country. And, you know, the adults that you're with are, like, dealing with very similar emotions, and it's really hard to focus. And I'm glad that you're talking about mental health and you're getting support, and I hope you continue to reach out, because I think everyone here could use a little support. These are strange days we're living through. So thank you for being here, because I know sometimes just showing up to meetings is hard, and you just need to decompress. So, thank you.
I just will echo that, so not to be repetitive, but again, thank you so much for your insights. And I just, one of the weird silver linings, I think, of this whole entire crazy experience is that I so appreciated getting your point of view every week. And, because it's hard as board member always to know what people are thinking. And so understanding how you're processing this experience and processing this in education under such unusual circumstances. And I really hope it's something that will, like, be always really part of the board experience of having that student voice, having your voices here. And just to kind of pick up on, Maura, I am really intrigued by this idea of a flexible Wednesday. You know, because I think so, we've kind of based this whole educational system in this certain kind of way, and we've done it the same way for years and years and years and years, and it sort of reflects the work week. And I do think if there are opportunities to rethink things and kind of extract those, you know, innovations that came out of necessity, then that could be something we could bring forwards. But anyway, thank you so much for your thoughts.
Other comments from the board right now?
Hey, young people, this is Eldred Harris. I just wanted to piggyback on what people are saying about where we are as a country. And the fact that you guys are holding together as well as you are is, let's just say, I think we're all as adults flabbergasted. As Moira said, we're trying to do it as well. Whatever this country has seen before, I can tell you to a certainty, we have not seen simultaneously the following: a pandemic, arrivals, anything from 1918, a virtual civil war, economic depression, a civil rights movement. These things are not supposed to happen at the same time. And we are dealing with all of them, and the fact that you guys are staying on board as young people and even trying to hold us as adults accountable throughout this process is a blessing to us. And it speaks well for you and your family and our community. So, thank you. But just take away from my comments, we may never experience all of these things once again, and I hope to God we don't. Thanks.
Other board comments? If not, I have the same question that Alexandra had. So I have seen some of the wording or some of the news releases, you know, obviously, educators, bus drivers, ICSD staff certainly are eligible through Phase 1B to get vaccinated. I read that ICSD did have vaccine available this week. And just wondering, you know, how that is, the process of delivering that vaccine source that is being explored. I know we're working with the unions to prioritize who gets the vaccine first, but exec team could just give us a bit of an update before we move on to the rest of the meeting. That'd be great.
Yes, I'm going to defer to Ms. Talke, who wishes to share some information about this item.
Sure, thanks. Good evening. So the Tompkins County Health Department has worked closely with Cuga Health Systems to, I would say, very quickly and expertly set up large-scale vaccination sites, right, that large-scale vaccination site that's up at the mall. It's been rather extraordinary, and I would say compared to other counties, surrounding counties, our county has done an exceptional job, again, in partnership with Cuga Health Systems. It's important to note that vaccinations are being distributed to hospitals and to pharmacies. Pharmacies will start to receive vaccines and can order them. And that the school district itself doesn't receive the vaccine at this time. And so we are, we know that there is some state-level coordination that has shifted some and shifted very recently. And so we're trying to stay as up-to-date as possible and just be as supportive as possible to our educators who do need to take time, potentially during the school day, in order to receive that first shot. So, for example, I'm covering in a classroom tomorrow morning, right? Because we want to make sure that our educators are able to go and head there. So we are meeting with our unions as well, and we look forward to, as we learn more information and continue to collaborate, a more streamlined process, we're hopeful.
Can I add something from my own experience today? So the situation is changing very rapidly. So, for instance, because the CDC this morning revised guidelines to have people over 65 included in 1B phase, then Governor Cuomo changed the state guidelines. And I got a robo-call this morning telling me that people over 65, like myself and my husband, were eligible. So I immediately jumped on the website to try to make an appointment. And meanwhile, my daughter, who's a teacher in the district, when she heard that teachers were eligible on Monday, she jumped on the website and she got an appointment for tomorrow. The website was quickly, like, overwhelmed today. I managed, after about 45 minutes, nonstop, to get an appointment for myself. But then my husband and I both spent the next, like, four hours trying to get an appointment for him unsuccessfully. And my daughter was telling me that over at ACS, her colleagues were all frantically doing the same thing with the website, trying to get an appointment. And I gather that anxiety was really getting high and frustration and just a lot of questions about it. So I think, and a lot of talking among themselves and texting, you know, like, people giving each other advice about, you know, how to try to get an appointment, because it would tell you that all of the appointments were filled for the next three days. But then, if you, like, refreshed it, it would open up some appointments. You click on an available appointment, and it would immediately say it was already taken. And so people are spending hours trying to get an appointment. And as far as I know, because my daughter mentioned it, there hadn't been any communication from the Teachers Association to the teachers. So they're all just kind of like talking amongst themselves and trying to collectively figure it out. And so this, I think this needs to be addressed.
Moira, you said it well early on, when you said this is a fast-moving or a fast, fast, quickly changing situation. You're absolutely right. And, you know, if we had, if we had greater control or authority, that it would likely be a different situation. I think, you know, this is, there's certainly a challenge in terms of supply and demand, of course, right? And I understand and have heard as well that tensions have run high for some of our colleagues as well. Although we, you know, for years, we've hosted flu clinics where we provided the vaccine on our campuses. We've partnered with Wegmans most recently, right? So we would love to do something like that as soon as we're able, in order to make it a more coordinated effort. And have already begun to talk to some folks in other pharmacies when they received that they have not yet received any vaccine.
Moira, I would just add, as a faculty member, I received my letter today confirming that I am available as part of Phase 1B. That email came sometime this afternoon, and the minute I clicked on the register now, it brought me to a state website. That state website then sent me to Cuga Medical Services to try to find, and then also sent me to the possibility of looking at Walgreens or other places. And so I'm just trying to reiterate what Lily said, we have multiple agencies trying to coordinate something that keeps changing immediately. And so I understand the anxiety that folks have. I understand the confusion. You know, I've spent a good portion of my day as well trying to understand where I, when and where I can begin the first of the vaccines. And I'm hoping that the state website has a little bit more clarity to it than it currently does, because it's widely confusing for those folks who've ever tried to log on. So I'll look for our admin team to try to provide clarity when and where they can. But I also know it's going to need some work from Cuga Medical Services as well as the State Health Department.
Well, thanks, everybody. It just, obviously, was a subject that was out there. And I think we'll continue doing what we're doing now, which is physically distancing and wearing masks and doing everything that we've been doing since last March, and being vigilant. And more vaccine doses will be pushed out. And so typically, government websites are probably the least up-to-date in functionality and computing power. Any other software, I mean, we know they're historically and typically hard to deal with. So we'll just keep hanging in there. And as a community, you know, Ithaca and the surrounding community has done a great job of navigating through all this. Cornell and Ithaca College will be coming back in a matter of weeks. And testing, obviously, will continue. But, you know, this will, every day, there's going to be more folks vaccinated. And eventually, yeah, you'll be able to walk into CVS or some of the others, or Wegmans, and likely get a vaccine shot. But it's going to be a little bit before we can do that. But millions of doses are being produced, billions of doses are, and they'll be pushed out. It's getting it to all the various folks that need it. That's always the challenge. The logistics, that's how you win and lose wars, I believe. And speaking of wars, we have the consent agenda. If we're good with everything here, we do have the consent agenda that has a few items on it. And if we could have a motion, and second, then we can answer any questions.
I will move the consent agenda for consideration and adoption.
Second? Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Eldred. It's not a large consent agenda. Any questions? The one item I would point out, there is the resolution to certify the tax warrant. Amanda, I do see, this is, I'm going to pull it up really quickly. There is, well, there is a document that all the board members, when we sat around the table, we would pass it around and everyone would sign. So that document is there. So are we going to do that electronically? We're going to pass this now, but eventually, board members will still need to sign it, correct?
Right. We sent that question out to our attorney to see if that is still what, you know, the process that we should follow, considering that we're hosting our meetings virtually. And so we will be working with the attorney and Tricia, the board clerk, and myself will ensure that this gets signed in a timely manner, if that is the case, Rob. So as of right now, we have not heard otherwise. So we will, we will be probably shuttling this around and making the rounds so that we can get the proper signatures.
We, in my world, we sign electronically all the time. It would seem like they would have, that would be an appropriate way to do this. I would certainly promote that we sign it electronically. Vote on it tonight and sign electronically.
That's right. I'll work with Tricia for that, Rob.
So move seconded. Any other questions, Sean?
Quick question. Amanda, I don't know if this impacts us. I was trying to do some research, but I know local news media sources have been talking about the city of Ithaca had some property tax corrections and errors. I don't know if that had an impact on us or not. And I would presume not, but I just wanted to make sure.
There's always warrant adjustments. That's what you see on this one in terms of the errors and corrections. If they rise to the level that they would have gone to litigation or, right, or to a means in which a court would have made a determination that they were either over-assessed or under-assessed, then we would use our tax sorcery reserve to make that hole and to either pay them back. Usually, it's to pay them back the monies that they paid to us in advance. And so that happens sometimes. We did not get any alerts as to, you know, these documents that are here, that those two things are related.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda. Anyone else right now? If not, Tricia, if you could call the role.
Rob Ainsley?
Yeah.
Yes.
John Edwards, the grandpa?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Cola Fay? Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Pat Watson?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. Moving on, and Dr. Brown, reports and announcements. And Dr. Brown, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ainsley, for the opportunity and for affording me some additional time this evening. I have much to share that's on my heart and on my mind today. Special thank you to the Board of Education, the members I'm looking at on the screen, and those members who came before you, particularly J. True, Brad Granger, affectionately Mary Granger. I used to refer to Mary as my 10th board member for years. So thank you to the Board of Education for your support and for helping this dude from the South have a deeper, develop a deeper understanding of love. And I think we need more love now more than ever. And because of your support and your guidance, I know much more about forgiveness, commitment, patience, truthfulness, honesty. I've learned a lot about love. I write about it. People ask me about it. But not until, you know, I came here, did I develop this deep sense of understanding about what it means to love and to live in a loving community. And that's what we have here, the place I live and serve and raised my family. I love this community, and I want to thank you for taking a chance on the young dude from the South, who was the youngest superintendent in the country at the time, to come into a place I had never visited before, thinking I was going to see tall buildings, because I was going to New York, and I ran into dairy farms. It was a shock for a brother. And I want to thank you for that. As I'm texting some of my superintendent friends all over the country right now, sharing with them what I'm going to share with you, they're saying thank you to me. I've become the grandfather of the superintendency. Imagine that. I know I'm bald now and a little gray, but to be the grandfather, I'm the one who's survived it the longest, as they're saying to me right now to my right. I'm finishing my 10th year in this role. You know, typically, superintendents don't commit or survive or stay that long. So, yeah, as people can recognize right now, and the community members who are tuning in or who may tune in later, I'm in a very reflective mode, and I've been in that place, you know, since most of this year, particularly since March 22nd, when my mama passed, and she asked me to stay on that journey. And that journey I'm referring to is that authentic one. We've all been on the academic one. We know the academic journey that has people being uncomfortable, that has us putting out statements when tough things happen, like happened in my hometown of Charlottesville not long ago. When tough things happen, like what happened at the Capitol, you put out statements. But the authentic one is when you engage with Adam, to refer to earlier, when you have those hard conversations with folks who don't look like you, who are from different places, all in the same space. The authentic journey looks like us changing policy, which is what we've done since I've been here over the last decade, when we've gone through every policy in a policy manual. The authentic journey looks like us having closely responsive teaching practices and a and a commitment to inclusion, which means everybody has a space in our space. The authentic journey looks like having our schools and our school district become a place for social change. And we mean it. What I'm seeing all over our country this past week is that school districts haven't been allowed that space or that safety to do just that. That's why this journey we've been on, I've been on this last decade, because of your support, Board of Education, and this wonderful community that I live in and work in and will stay in, because of that love, even an authentic journey. And that's what my mama told me to stay on. I'm in this reflective mode because, you know, even after 10 years, I said after 10 years, I had to think about what was next. And it has become so, so clear to me, particularly over the last week, that this conversation we're having here, what we're doing right here, needs to be scaled. We cannot have school districts locally, across the state, across this country, not engaging in dialogue about issues around oppression, marginalization, ableism, racism, classism, sexism. We cannot have that happen any longer. See, this journey that I'm on, as much as I love this job, and I thought I was going to be here and doing this work for the next 20 years, this journey I'm on is taking me and it's calling me to do something a little different that will allow for us to scale this conversation, will allow for this work to happen in schools all over the world. I said to the, I said to the Board of Education tonight that I'm looking to transition to a new role. Don't say me, Rob, I know you want to jump in here, I know. Give me a, give me a second, I'm coming. I'm gonna, it's been in the works over the last year. Some folk who've been following our work know that I've been leading an international conversation hosted by a group, Discovery Education, which, you know, Discovery Education has a pretty, pretty big brand and an imprint all over the world when it comes to teaching and learning. I've been fortunate and had a great privilege of facilitating those, facilitating dialogues about equity and inclusion and diversity. And we've had some of the best thinkers in the world engage in this dialogue about what needs to happen and what needs to change in our schools. That organization has asked me to continue that work and other work around equity and inclusion and diversity and the transitions that need to take place with teaching and learning, not only in this community, but in communities all over the world. And that's where I need to be thinking and that's where I need to be transitioning next, while still living in this great community, serving hopefully in different ways. I would never leave. I was not, you know, of all the jobs and all the opportunities that have come before me over the last decade, if it didn't include me staying in this house and in this community, it didn't go past the first couple of sentences. But this opportunity I have before me now will allow me to stay here and serve in different ways, but also scale our work on an international level. I will become the, I will be heading the Equity and Inclusion and Diversity Work for Discovery Education in the near future. And as I shared with the board earlier tonight, and I've been talking with several board members over the past almost a month now about this opportunity, I hope to be transitioning beginning in February. We've built, I know this is, it's never a good time for a superintendent to transition, but what I do know is that we have an amazing team of educators here. And as I've said often, I hope I'm inspired to take my place when I'm gone. My transition will begin, I hope, in February and we transition through the rest of the school year. But the work that we are part of now is bigger than me now. Those first couple of years when I was here, I was like, we need to build capacity, we need to build capacity. This conversation needs to continue, the work needs to continue when I'm not here. It will continue with me not being here. As I think about, and today I was reflecting and writing down what's happened over the last decade. You know, we, my first board meeting, Sean, you remember this, the first board meeting, I was in the hot seat because we had a high school that was deemed in needs of improvement. And remember the folks who showed up to that meeting, how can Ithaca High School be a school in needs of improvement? Well, what's happened at Ithaca High School since then? Our graduation rates have gone from 78 to as high, 78% to as high as 94. That school that was in needs of improvement is now being recognized by US News often as one of the best high schools in the nation and the top 2% in the country. Most recently, we were named the 48th best STEM high school in the nation. You know, over the last decade, we've been recognized by the College Board six times for increasing the diversity in our highest level courses, while at the same time increasing the achievement as well. There are only a couple of districts in the country who can say that one time. See, we've been recognized by as one of the best communities for music education, six times in a row. We have the largest one-to-one technology deployment, and I know we got issues, students have talked about our Chromebooks, but at the end of the day, we still have the largest one-to-one deployment in our New York, in New York State, and we were one of the first. We have case studies in place, anti-marginalization approaches, teaching and learning. We've done some amazing work together. This journey we're on is an authentic one. And while I'm saying to the board and the community tonight that I'm going to be transitioning and to be serving in a different capacity, what I do know is that this work will continue. So again, Rob, this is the longest superintendent's business session of my last 10 years. But it is, I can't think of a better time than the superintendent's business section to share what's on my heart and mind. And again, thank you, and a special thank you, Rob. Rob, Sean, Eldred, you were in the room when I walked in in that suit that didn't fit so well. And you, you allowed me to talk to y'all for 30 minutes and share that I wanted to change the world. Had no idea how I was going to do it, but you let me finish that first interview and you invited me back for a second one. And here we are, 10 years, having an impact on young people all over the world. And I hope that we can continue to be on this journey together. And again, I hope I've inspired some folks to take my place here when I'm gone. So with that, I'm saying that I'm done, just thank you for the opportunity. And we'll have, we have much more work to do still. Thank you.
Dr. Brown, you kind of interrupted the flow of the meeting, you know, we. But we appreciate your thoughts, your work, the mission. Mission and vision, Dr. Brown, that does not change for the district. The, everyone from, well, me, to every, every employee knows the mission and vision of this district. 6,000 thinkers, engage, educate, and empower. That, we could not say that before. And, and that, that will continue. Where, there's much work to do. And I personally am very, very happy that you will be in this community, continue to collaborate. And, and Dr. Brown, we, you know, we said, and other retired board members that are on the line, we said, Dr. Brown, you know, come to Ithaca and you do great work. Education is the number one industry here, you will be noticed. And I think it went beyond being noticed. That's one thing, but really taking on the mission throughout New York State to, with your efforts to diversify the superintendencies throughout the state. And then really just nationally becoming a recognized K-12 education leader in this country. Going to the White House, you know, we talked about, who would have thought that, you know, growing up, that you would, A, come to New York State and then be, through your work, through your efforts, through your talents, be welcomed into the highest levels of this country and for all the right reasons. You had, you had a message, message and a mission. And, and that was recognized. There's, there's lots of people that can talk, Dr. Brown, and we would mention that a lot when we would go and hear them speak. It's not many that really follow it up and really make a difference. And so, you know, it's been the most, certainly the most important work I've ever done. I've had a few jobs, as you know, Dr. Brown, that have lasted for a while. But the most important work, sure, I mean, it's, it's coming back. And, and yes, and turning Ithaca High from, you know, needing some help to being, again, one of the best high schools in the country as a, as a symbol of the whole district. And, and I'm just talking for a minute, so you could recover and, and let it sink in a bit to the community that we're going to be in a bit of a transition as a, as a district. But we have an outstanding leadership team. We have outstanding leaders, educational leaders that are rebuilding. And that's really been a process of these last 10 years of building and attracting great talent that wanted to work on the mission of putting kids first, all kids first. So I'll leave it to others that want to perhaps say a few.
Well, I'll just repeat some of the things that I said to Dr. Brown, that I am very, very sad to lose the regular interaction and inspiration that he has provided to me as a board member. I'm thrilled that he is still going to be here in the community and that he, we will continue to have maybe not so regular interaction and inspiration, but it will still be there. And I know this, this is a fabulous opportunity for him. And so I'm, I'm happy that he's able to bring his magic to a larger stage.
Then I'd just like to echo that and also just to tell you what an honor it's been to be able to serve on the board with you as a superintendent and how much I'm going to miss your guidance, but happy that you'll be able to share it more broadly. So thank you.
As someone who's kind of new to the school board and to Ithaca for that matter, I, I think it's important to point out how unique Ithaca is in inclusion and how rare it is for students of all abilities to automatically be accepted, no questions. Because most other school districts in this country, that's not the norm whatsoever. Parents have to fight, children are excluded. And Dr. Brown, thank you for that. It's such a rare thing. And as I've said, I am so excited that you get to continue on and, and really do inclusion on a national, on an international scale. And like I mentioned to you earlier today, hopefully you can meet some of my former colleagues.
Well, Dr. Brown, we know that you could have left a long time ago with the many offers you received. However, you chose to keep your commitment to this community, to the children of our school district. And you always talked about love and educating these babies and really moving this school district forward. And I truly appreciate that you brought to me a deeper understanding of how we grow capacity and how we grow our own, you know. And then the leaders in education that have come up through the school district under your watch is truly incredible. And I know I would not have been on this board and been part of this journey if you didn't come to Ithaca. I would have been one of those people standing on the sidelines complaining and pointing fingers. Yet, you know, you helped me become part of the process for improvement. And all I can say is thank you.
I'd like to follow what Chris said. Chris and I came onto the board together at the same time, slightly shortly after you came to Ithaca. And like Chris, I was inspired to run for the board, because of your message, and to do positive things. And I've been very involved in the district, you know, many years on the PTA, years on the PTA Council. And I knew that, that despite the many, many strengths of the district, there were also many areas that we needed improvement in. And, you know, you've, you've done wonderful work. Equity, inclusion, diversity, all, all things that we needed. But I also want to say that while you were doing all those things, you were also dealing with nuts and bolts, infrastructure, where, where a lot of good people's efforts were being sidetracked just because we didn't have coordinated efforts, you know, you know. 20 high school principals in 20 years. Half of the elementary schools started at one time and half started at the other, and there was no coordination between the curricular development at the elementary schools. You know, the, the middle schools started and ended at certain times and nobody, none of the teachers from one school talked to the other. There were, there were so many, there were so many structural failings when you came in. And I'm, I'm going to tell this community that I have never seen a harder working or more dedicated human being than, than you have been for the past 10 years. This, this job is, it's stressful, it's difficult, it's time consuming, it's intellectually and emotionally challenging. And not only did you, did you make incredible strides constantly, but you've done it with grace and humor and humility. And somehow you've managed to keep your sanity. And this community owes you a lot. I join with my colleagues in, in congratulating you on being able to take your gifts and try to make public education a better place on a larger scale. What has always been in my heart since I met you is that you have, you are a champion of public education. And as my colleagues have said, you could have left us at any point and make five or 10 times what you made with us, and you stayed and you made our community much better and you assembled a team of wonderful educators who I desperately hope will stay and carry on your mission. And like my colleagues, I am so glad that you are remaining in this community. And I think that this is a wonderful opportunity, not just for you, but for the very intelligent people who hired you and for the millions of young people whose lives you will touch.
I'm, I'm struggling, Doc. We've been having part of this conversation, you've let the board officers know for a couple of weeks that this was something you were entertaining. I had the privilege of being part of that Discovery Education Equity Series this summer and listening and learning from some of the best thinkers in education. When I completed my PhD at Cornell on Policy Analysis and Management, it was focused exclusively on the Ithaca City School District. And it was my mentors in the community, the more experienced vanguard, who demanded that I run for the school board to help select the next superintendent. I've been serving for, going on my 13th year as a school board member. I said, I know that Brad is on the phone, I see Rob, Eldred, a number of other community members in that room when you walked in. And it was pretty clear to us where we were headed, that this was an opportunity for us to do something that was innovative, non-traditional, but also put a lot of pressure on your shoulders. So I'm saying all that to say, yeah, I'm going to cheer tomorrow, right? I'm going to celebrate, I'm going to praise the opportunity you have to scale this work globally. I also was underestimating how I would feel when the reality of you announcing to the community that you'd be transitioning would sit in, right? So there is a. So there is a, there's a, I don't want to call it a sadness because I'm not sad. I, I understand the work we have to do before us. So I guess what I'll say in public is, thank you. I've appreciated being on this journey. It's not always easy as someone who is able to watch some of the things that you have to experience and discuss for the past number of years. But discovery education is blessed and I'll look to my board colleagues to pick us all up collectively and help us carry on that, that torch. So I say that with great respect that I'm just very appreciative of what you've done and looking forward to how we can continue this journey moving forward. So appreciated, Dr. Brown. Thank you.
Anyone else? Others? Do you wish to weigh in?
Yeah, I think other people have covered the accolades. Dr. Brown talked about some of his achievements. Trust me, the list is long. The list is long. The list is long. Hopefully we'll hear and see more of those represented in the future. I think I want to take a different tact, especially given what we've all experienced very recently. I've done a lot of reflecting in the last few days about this idea of love. And Dr. Brown not only wrote a book about it, but talked about authenticity. What did he start by saying? He started by talking about what's on his heart. He used the word love in his conversation. This is far more authentic than I think most people understand. We're not throwing words around. I just want to tell a story. And then I'll close with some thoughts about some of the things we've been through from our perspective, but let me share this story with you. So you're, so you can understand just how authentic this is. So when Dr. Brown and his family first arrived in Ithaca prior to the interview, they did what most people do, warm summer night, they wandered around the commons. And they wound up in Diaspora, a store that I had down there for eight years, as many of you know. And Landon was as big as, she was as big as a crook in his arm. He was holding it like a football. And of course I knew who he was, right? We'd spent the last six weeks turning over every rock, every single stone about this dude. He had no idea who this weird, strange guy with big locks was, you know, in this little store in Niffa. So I started peppering with questions, you know, legal training kicked in. I'm asking some open-ended questions, see if I can get this guy to, to share his personality before the interview. So I'm like, you know, hey man, I haven't seen you before. What you doing? It's like, um, he had just investigated in town. I'm like, all right, so what do you investigate? What kind of role? It's like, oh, yeah, this sounds to do with education. I asked a couple more questions. I realized that he wasn't going to play my game. He wasn't going to reveal to me that he was here to be the head, to be considered to be the head honcho. That's when I realized, oh, we can do this. This young man is humble enough to get already that it's not about him. Right? And when I walked in the next day in whatever kind of fancy suit I had, I could see a look on his face like, oh, wow. We had another board member who typically wears suits and walked in looking like a janitor who had just finished playing the football game and building this house. And I could see his face again go, oh, wow. And we had a third board member who took her shoes off during the meeting so she could be comfortable. And then I really saw his face like, wow, what am I doing? Where am I? I tell that story, you know, because values don't waver under difficult circumstances. And they should never change simply because you're up against it. From any, any point of reference, when you're working for kids, here's just a brief, brief synopsis of some of the things we've had to not just deal with, but also not let them get in the way of his primary expertise, which is a lot of kids, education and learning. We had the 2008 financial collapse, which shook us, I don't know, Rob Harmon, five years, six years to get over, right? We've had the dust up about the punchback of North and then play, which is everyone on this call knows, national and international, people threatening and trying to cause significant emotional harm to our kids. We had a crisis with letting the water, the found that we're water authorities with two areas of town. Who knew? Now we're dealing with a global pandemic. People say references, influenza epidemic of 1918, and we're in the middle of what seemed like a soft civil war. And throughout all of that, this team, I emphasize team, no one can do this alone. His team has managed to play offensive line and fullback for Dr. Brown so he can grab the football and do what he is almost uniquely gifted to do, which is love on babies and make them better learners and thinkers and put them in a, put them in the kind of position where we can have young people on this phone call right now indicate to us as adults that they are fully capable of negotiating what happened last week, right? Without violence, without fights, without interrupting each other's education. They may not have all the answers, but they have the capacity to manage the conversation. What more can we ask for as adults when we're living in times that none of us have seen before? So thank you, Dr. Brown, for taking care of our babies. And thank you for letting us help you take care of yours. And I'm looking forward to the next leg of the journey, though. Peace.
Thanks. Anyone else right now? We have a very important safety plan to read, well, for a second reading and adoption. Anything, anything else right now, Dr. Brown, or you're good? I think that's, you are good, Dr. Brown. You are good. So Sean and Dan Bryman, we have the safety plan and hopefully from what I have observed at policy work sessions, it's been vetted and turned and fixed and ready to go, perhaps?
Yeah, and I'll turn it over to Dan in a, in a moment. You know, what I do want to do is preface, one of the things that Dr. Brown has said is we've spent considerable time as a school district going over each and every policy to pay attention to language, which is often misogynistic and sexist, to think about the audience and who it's intended to, to make sure that we actually are speaking on behalf of young people. And so this safety plan is in some regards, a statewide pro forma expectation that we're supposed to create and every school district is supposed to have one that's been adopted by the school district. I feel a special sense of pride, given the work that we've been doing, not just in the policy committee, but the work that Dan Bryman has done specifically, Dr. Bryman greatly appreciated, of trying to push the safety plan to be a little bit more in line with the way in which we think about education. So Dan, I'll let you speak to it and then I'll come back and then we can move it and see if we can adopt it for this evening.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Sean. Appreciate it. We, we are really proud of the safety plan. Even in our opening statement, it shares our values, our district values. In the, in the beginning, it shares how we're committed and grounded in the principles of the culture of love. We talk about how the global pandemic has created many challenges, but this is also a critical opportunity for us to examine this plan. And it's also a great opportunity to create an anti-racist and anti-oppressive plan. And we cannot let this health crisis create new oppressive systems within our safety plan. So I'm going to go through a few highlights here. For our evacuation and our lockdowns, we're incorporating best practices during COVID in a thoughtful way. Classes will evacuate separately rather than all once. A distance will be taken. Our lockdown drills will be conducted without hiding or sheltering, but instead will provide an overview as it, as it is a drill. And we had some really good feedback in all of our policy meetings. And we want to make sure that we're communicating to families before our, before our drills and for our lockdown drills to give adequate notice so families can plan and can support our students' social and emotional health. So I'm going to go, Sean, I don't know how, how in-depth you want me to go. Because we did have two meetings. We met on December the first and we went on January 5th, but I can go in a lot more depth if you would like.
Dan, I think that provides a really good introduction. The plan has been available both in terms of policy committee as well as the agenda. If board members have questions, they should feel free. I will also add that we had significant conversations again about best practices, trying to find ways to support our students, right? And thinking about ways in which we may run counter what has historically been done in terms of who is the first persons that we call and thinking much more about how we can empower our building leaders to also do the great work that they have done. So we can begin, maybe if it makes sense, I can move in second and then see if there are any additional questions by board members. And if there's anything else you'd like to add, Dan?
No, I, I, you know, I do want to, I mean, I do want to say, I really appreciate the work we spent on contacting law enforcement and thinking about steps and check, check-ins as well as looking at situations and allowing our, our building principals and our administrators some flex, flexibility and discretion. So I really appreciate the thoughtful approach we did around that and many other areas of the safety plan.
And just to reiterate to the public that there is a necessity in a safety plan to contact law enforcement. We tried to ensure it wasn't the first step that was recommended or taken unless it was absolutely necessary. And so Dan did some great research of looking at other examples, looking at other organizations and what they recommend in terms of school safety. And so I recommend that folks take a look at the language that we've used as well as how it was framed. So with that being said, I make a motion to adopt, I make a motion for a second reading of the safety plan for adoption.
Second.
Segment by Maura. Thanks, Maura. Anything else? Policy committee, Pat, want to weigh in?
No, we've been, we've been talking about this a lot. As, as everyone said, it's been out there for the public. And I think Dan's done a really great job of working through the language and the message behind the policies under the direction of the policy committee. So it's a good, it's a sound.
I do have one thing. At the bottom of page 25, at our last meeting, I suggested just some tweaking of the language about notification to parents. And then if I recall right, and I'm pretty sure I do, that Sean put in the chat, I believe, a rewording of that, that was really good, but it didn't, it didn't get changed in the document.
I am, I'm sorry about that, Moira. Yeah, I, I thought I had made all the changes. I'm happy to make, I'm happy to grab that language and put it in into that sentence.
Yeah, it's.
Sorry about that, everyone.
Yeah, the more of the sentence that starts this kind of communication will help to provide. And Sean wrote something that worked really well, but it's in there in the chat.
Okay.
So Moira, the language still exists. It's still, it's still there, but not just edited yet. So we can certainly pass the safety plan with edits as described and by Moira, correct? And, and everyone is good with that because we want to pass this tonight. That would be great. Right? Good, good. All right. So with no other questions, move seconded, Tricia, if you would. Call the roll.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Corral?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris? Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Matt Wazin?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. It does moved and seconded and passed by the board. So Dan, thanks for all your work. Set in on a few of those work sessions. I know it's you, it, there was a lot of effort was put in to get it right. And so we appreciate that. And one more edit, Dan, and then you can put that aside and go on to other things, Dan.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
And that's, it's for the school district business for tonight. We have other business discussion items, perhaps upcoming dates. We certainly will continue to meet in our work sessions and we will have yet another full voting meeting on the 26th, which will be an important meeting because we will be voting on transition items for the district. And so that will be an important meeting for the board and the team. We do, Sean, I believe, have a few items that we just wanted to discuss in exec session. So we'll probably slide to exec session. That does not end the meeting. We will come back into open session to formally close the board meeting for tonight. We don't anticipate will be a long time, but we will slide back into the lead meeting function on Zoom, but we'll come back and we'll close the meeting in public as required and as we always do. Anything else, any other items that we need to touch on before we go into exec again? From anyone?
Then I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of specific employees.
Second.
Send by Maura. Tricia, keep the call the roll again. There we go.
Rod Ainsley?
Yes.
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Matt Wazin?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Let's hop into the lead meeting and join into the breakout room for a few minutes. Thanks. Let's hop into the leave meeting and join into the breakout room, uh, for a few minutes. Thanks. How you, how you doing, Lilly? Um, Dr. Brown, uh, you're still with us. I thought you would be out of the suit by now and, um, something about you're getting thirsty, but, uh, I don't.
I don't have anywhere to go and that, that can wait.
Okay. Um, we, uh, we're, um, well, we're, we're good. And then there will be a press release going out, um, and that's, uh, has been looked over. So I think we're, we're ready to, uh, wrap it up for tonight. And, uh, and tomorrow is a, as we used to say, tomorrow's the school day, right? And so there's school tomorrow. And, uh, that means we have to get to bed early, um, because there's lots of work tomorrow. So, um, anything, uh, anything else, Dr. Brown? Lilly, anybody? You all good? All right, so we'll, um, uh, upcoming dates, uh, we certainly, we still have, uh, facilities. It's going to get together on Thursday to talk about projects with the OACM meeting. Um, and so work continues and so we'll, uh, so we'll be seeing folks then. And then, uh, the next Tuesday. And, uh, and I, Sean, I do believe we're going to work in an exec session between work sessions on Tuesday, correct? And we'll, we'll just have to break out some time for that, right?
Yes, we'll be working on that in the next couple of days.
Okay, excellent. So everyone, it's been a, um, a momentous evening, Dr. Brown. It's, um, you know, 10 years ago, um, it wasn't January, Dr. Brown, that was your first. You were a mid-year hire, which everybody said, well, no, you shouldn't do a mid-year hire. But it all works out, Dr. Brown. And, uh, and a lot of meetings and, Dr. Brown, I think, uh, you were gone for a few, but I think you and I have been at all of them and Sean and others. And, uh, so it's been, uh, a lot of, a lot of meetings. And, um, we're going to have another one, uh, between, uh, now and, uh, February. So we'll, uh, we'll see everybody soon. Uh, and the community will, uh, will be talking to everyone soon. So we're all good. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everybody for, uh, a great meeting. Thank you.
Okay, good night, folks.